I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Before we start, I'd like to ask that we observe a moment of silence for the following individuals. Janine Onick Long, a 1981 graduate of North Syracuse Central School District. Harold H. Carr, a 1941 graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Lynn Marie Stalin Kelly, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. And Josephine Wright, a retired employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Okay, we have a comment from the audience, Nancy Young.
Hi, I'm Nancy Young from Gillette Road Middle School. And I said a few words last week, and I just wanted to follow up with this. I have to admit, in the 20 years of working in this district, I have only attended a few board meetings. I have been at the last four meetings, and I have now seen all of you in a different light. I always thought of the board as straight-faced, stuffy people voting on items like a business. I sure have changed my mind now. I've watched every one of you smile, some of you cry, and really care and feel for everyone that spoke up here. When I left each meeting, I went home and watched the rest on the computer. I watched the last meeting until the recording ended at 11:35. Wow, I was in my pajamas, and you were still putting all of your effort into the budget that night. In just four meetings, I have a new respect for each and every one of you. You are all real people with feelings and families and problems of your own, yet you give your all for us and the kids in the district. Twenty years ago, I didn't even know what special education meant, and now I find myself fighting for what they deserve. When I spoke at the last meeting to save the TAs and the blended program, I was afraid of most of you. Except for Mr. Crabtree, who I bowled with for years, and who wouldn't love Mr. Crabtree. I know I'm only one person in this big district, and a month ago, I would have thought that you would not have really cared of what I would have to say. Some people told me it was already set, and what I said would not matter. Today, I felt like you really listened to what all of us had to say and care about everyone in this district. I felt proud to have the opportunity to speak to all of you, no matter what the outcome is of the budget and the hard decisions I know you had to make. I know in my heart that you all care, and you will do your best for the children and all of the employees. I have learned so much and grown so much myself in the 20 years I've been in this district, and I feel strongly that we are a family. I will do my best to get out there and get the voters to the poll, well, at least all of the yes voters. Thank you for making me feel that what I said could maybe have made a difference, and I hope to be in attendance of many more meetings, and I thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Keegan. And Dr. Dice.
So we're going to tag-team tonight's presentation.
What a team, such a team.
That's right, what a team. So in recognizing how stressful the budget process usually is, as indicated, late nights, many conversations, some frustrating, tiring, we wanted to at least start out with one of the main reasons as to why we're here, and it's for our kids. And so, what a great way to begin our last budget presentation with a focus on student achievement. So, as you look, some of the things that we wanted to highlight this year that's been really exciting for North Syracuse, our families and our students, as you can see, CNS engineering team, who took first place for the third consecutive year in the hydrogen fuel cell prototype class of the Shell Eco Marathon Americas, and I'm not going to talk about all of them, but you can see them for yourself. Of course, North Stars Varsity Girls Basketball Team, they won the state championship. Woo, women rock. CNS High School and North Syracuse Junior High School students earned more than 20 top-10 medals at the state DECA competition. Four elementary school students scored 100 percent on the New York State Science Test. Awesome. Scholastic Art Awards, we had 12 Gold Key Winners, 18 Civil Key Winners, and several Honorable Mention. We also had Edwina Cassango, who was named as a semifinalist in the 48th Annual National Achievement Scholarship Program. We had hundreds of students/athletes who achieved the Scholar-Athlete status. We had the CNS Dance Team receive the Super Sweepstakes Award. We had the Science Olympia Team place 15th out of 51 teams at New York Science Olympia Competition in Buffalo. And so, even in the midst of making hard decisions, and, you know, really just struggling over some of the recommendations that we had to put forth, I hope that the community, as well as the board, and I think we all recognize that, but it's important to also say it, that everyone recognizes that first and foremost, the reason why we're here is for our kids. So, as we move into the meat of the presentation, we want you to keep in mind some of these key elements. One is that North Syracuse has been struggling financially for the past three years. Since '08-'09 expenditures have been cut 15.2 million, which includes 200 positions. When you look at the current year's budget, 2011-12, it's less than our '08-'09 budget. We have a limited fund balance and minimal reserves, and I think that's important to indicate once again, limited fund balance and minimal reserves. North Syracuse is also ranked 666th in New York State out of 676 districts in terms of student spending. And that says a lot in terms of the kind of achievement that we still expect of our students, and the accountability we expect of our teachers, all of which are delivered. Our proposed budget for next year, 2012-13, reflects the following. Expenditures of 138 million, an increase of 2.3 million, or 1.7 percent over 2011-12. NSCA's agreement, which will save the district 1 million, and once again, we acknowledge just their commitment and appreciate their willingness to actually come to the table and make that offer. Additional expenditure reductions of 3.4 million, including the elimination of 39.7 positions. A tax levy increase of 4.2 percent, which is the maximum tax levy increase under the new tax cap law. And so, in the end, the biggest thing that we want you to walk away with as you see this presentation is that we have succeeded in becoming more cost-effective while preserving, and I repeat that again, while preserving the programs that will enable and support student achievement.
So, we're going to look at some slides that you've seen before when we did our initial budget presentation. Obviously, the numbers are different now, but the, when we think about our revenues, the most important thing to take away is that the vast majority of our revenues, 97 percent, come from the tax levy and financial aid. Our tax levy represents 55 percent of our total revenues. And if you look at our revenues and you compare 2011 to 2012 to 1213, you'll still see that our general aids went down $328,000. And that's because despite the fact we got approximately 2.8 million more in state aid, we lost 3.2 million in federal jobs money. Fortunately, our pilots, I'll just comment on pilots, if we go back there, pilots are up $111,000. That's primarily due to the pilots we added recently for people that are staying on pilot agreements even after they've expired. We've talked about the sales tax agreement, how that's hurt us. Several years ago, that number was over 2 million, it's down to 430,000 in the upcoming year, which is a decline of 376,000. This budget proposal contemplates the use of about $850,000 of fund balance, and our total non-levy revenues are down $2.6 million. We pick up on a million eight in building aid due to our Smith Road project, and the proposed levy at 4.23 percent represents about $3 million for a total increase, as Dr. Dice mentioned in her overview, of $2.3 million, or 1.7 percent. You know, the story we've been talking about, the burden of funding schools has shifted from state and federal governments to the local taxpayers. You know, five years ago, four, five years ago, the distribution of funding was equal between the state and federal government and the local taxpayer. Now, the local taxpayer pays approximately 13 percent more than state and federal government in terms of that distribution, 42 versus almost 55 percent. Our budget history that we've talked about, again, I won't spend a lot of time on the slide, but it just shows you that our budget is basically flat. If you look at the '09-'10 year, we spent 138.4 million. We're proposing a budget this year of 138.8 million four years later. And that's, again, the 1.7 percent increase over last year, but only a 0.3 percent increase over the budget three years ago. When we think about expenditures, the most important thing, you know, we're an institution of learning, and instruction is what we do, 72 percent of the budget is focused on instruction. That's pretty impressive. When we think about expenditures and we look at the other, that's good, we look at the other slice, we think about the payroll side of things. Payroll represents 77 percent payroll and benefits. So, we're a people business, and so the vast majority of our funding is used on personnel. So, looking at the expenditures in more detail, salaries are projected to be down next year, benefits will be up, as will debt service. Debt service will be up primarily due to the Smith Road project, and our BOSI's expenses will be up. Keep in mind that we're working diligently to make sure that we try to work closely with BOSI's so that we can leverage their expertise and scale in order to help North Syracuse. We've talked about this before, expenditures per pupil. There's only one district in our OCMBOSI's that spends less than we do. Of the 25 districts, North Syracuse is ranked 24th. When you look at spending on the next slide, you'll see spending across the state, and you look at the larger districts, these are kind of the big districts other than the big five, you know, we're dead last. We spend significantly less than most of the larger districts in the state. And I know you'll note on here that many of the districts are downstate, but there's also a fairly significant number of central New York, western New York, you know, and upstate districts, you know, represented on this list. Here's a new slide we haven't looked at before, so just bear with me a second as I take you through this. One of the concerns that we often hear from people is that, you know, maybe we have too many administrators, or that we're top-heavy. And so, we looked at every building, and we looked at the administrators, and we calculated the ratio of administrators to employees and administrators to students. And if you look across all of our buildings, you know, these administrators, where you have one principal in a building, you know, they're handling anywhere from, you know, 49 people to 258 employees. You know, that's a fairly large number of people to manage. And you'll see in the far right is the column Ratio of Employees to Administrators. And so, that ratio ranges from 47 to 1, that's 47 employees to 1 administrator, to as high as 75 to 1, 75 employees to 1 administrator. The student ratios are all pretty high, 1 administrator covering anywhere from, you know, the mid-400s, low to mid-400s, to over 600 employees. So, our tax cap calculation, if I could take you through that, we had a little bit of a hiccup this week, but I think it all worked out for the best. As you know, one of our savings that we worked hard to get done for this budget season was we refinanced about $16 million worth of debt. Well, we had that on our list of cuts that we were going to make. What we didn't do is push it back through the amortization schedule for that debt, and therefore, the tax cap calculation. Well, fortunately, we had an auditor or examiner from the controller's office in last week, and they found that difference, and we recalculated our tax cap calculation. So, our new maximum tax levy limit is 4.23 percent increase, or a little over $3 million. And keep in mind that a big percentage of that increase represents the debt service on our Smith Road project that the taxpayers have already approved. I wanted to just touch on these survey results again, because I think the message is they're all over the board. If you look at the bottom four line items, ranging from 9.1 percent down to 12.5 percent of the population or survey recipients, participants, that represents about a little over 40 percent of the participants said that they would not accept a tax increase of 3.5 or less. The balance of our recipients said they would accept an increase anywhere from 4 to 15 percent. So, it's all over the board in terms of what the taxpayers or the survey participants are telling us about the tax increase. If we went with a 4.23 percent levy increase, that would result in an $89 increase on a $100,000 home. So, that gives you a sense of specifically what that would cost. In all three towns, Cicero, Clay, and Salina, that would represent an $89 increase on a $100,000 home, full value assessed home. And our, you know, the estimated school taxes for a $100,000 home would be $2,191. Again, we've looked at this table before. I've highlighted the kind of range that we've been talking about. 3.9 percent would be an $82 increase for a $100,000 home, and a 4.23 percent increase, what is the basis for this proposal, would be an $89 increase. Both would require a simple majority. And none of these calculations that I've talked about include any benefit of STAR. So, for a $100,000 home, you'd get a 30 percent discount on that amount. So, for a STAR, a $100,000 home, under STAR, the basic exemption, the $89 would really represent about $60 in increase.
So, as we come to the summary of our presentation, there's some things that I think are important to highlight once again, is despite the difficult economic environment that we are in, we continue to offer our students diverse programs that they need to succeed in college and careers. Even though we've made many difficult decisions around programming and so forth this year, North Syracuse, our offerings to our families and students have not changed. The 2012-13 budget fulfills our judiciary responsibility to the community. We're spending less per student than other districts in New York State, which although we're highlighting that, the fact that we're spending, God bless you, the fact that we're spending less, but still getting quality programming, great teachers, and good performance speaks volumes for the hard work that North Syracuse, our staff, our families, our students are doing to support increased student achievement. We have a very low ratio of administrators to students and employees. Our administrative expenses, as reported in the three-part budget, are 7.3 percent, which is very low for public districts, for public school districts. Our proposed budget for 2012-13 is only 0.3 percent more than our budget from '09-'10, and we have a strong track record of high student achievement. So, when we look at the next steps, one, we have pretty much completed our multi-year strategic plan, and that will be delivered, or the presentation will be done to all admin, provided to all employees on our opening day session, September 4th. Prior to that, presentations will be done or provided to leadership, as well as to our directors and our principals, because over the summer is where many of the work plans around the detailing for that strat plan will be developed and put into motion. We're going to continue to collaborate with our employees in new and different ways to meet the ongoing challenges of a changing educational environment. We're going to use technology to increase the efficiency and effectiveness of all employees. As we can see, many of our board members are using their iPads, so we're on our way. We're actively identifying new opportunities to work with BOSI's to leverage their expertise and achieve greater economies of scale. We're continuing to improve the management of healthcare costs through our self-insurance program. We continue to seek mandate relief from our governor and Albany legislators. We're continuing to share more information with the community in hopes of continuing to build trust in an environment where we can make the best possible decisions for our students, community, and employees. And we began that process this year in terms of our board presentations going live, and we will continue to do those things. Our district dispatch, we've taken a different approach to the information that we're going to be providing regarding the budget. Our website, we're looking to make some changes. The fact that we conducted a survey to seek input from the community about what tax increase they could live with are all ways that we're going to continue to, once again, get input from our community, but also provide information, so that way, when the time comes to make a decision, it can be an informed decision. When you look at the budget process timeline, we're now at April 16th, and so tonight, it's between the 19th and the 16th, we've had a number of budget deliberations, and tonight is the big day for adoption. And the next meeting on May 8th will be another budget hearing, and then May 15th is our budget vote. And last but not least, any board questions and discussion or comments are welcome.
Could you, Don, for me, please? Last meeting, we had talked about a percentage increase based on what the tax cap was last, what the tax cap was last time. And we talked about what that would look like relative to what was in there, and what was put back and what was taken out. Could you just go through that for me?
Yeah, I can recap real quick. So, the last meeting, we heard loud and clear that you folks wanted us to add back in elementary orchestra and strings, and, sorry, strings and band. And we, and in addition, we added back the phys ed, the opt-out, we backed away from that. And then we used up a little bit of more fund balance. Remember, we were originally talking about using 600,000, and this proposal has 850 in here. And that kind of gets us to the 4.23 percent. We were, last, we were at about 4.5 percent. So, between the fund balance and the add-backs that we made, we got to the 4.23.
Now, I guess, I asked some questions last week about the special ed, what was in there, and were there some, not changes, but were there some, is there some attrition there relative to some of the staffing?
The actual numbers.
Could you just go through that for me?
Yep.
I can speak to that. We are proposing the cut of 18 teaching assistant positions, and as of last Friday, we have four retirements. Their contract doesn't require a six-month notice, so we, in the past, we've gotten last-minute retirements all the way through the summer, so we may in fact get a few more.
So, what was the increase last meeting, when we talked about?
We were, well, we were at a 4.5 percent increase last meeting.
So, we were at 4.5 with all of the things that are included here today?
Yeah, actually, we were at 4.5 with, and we went back and we added in the items I just mentioned, and used a little bit of fund balance process.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions? Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. First of all, I came in here this evening feeling it was at 3.9 based on the information that was given over the weekend. So, obviously, something changed from Friday to today, from 3.9 to 4.23.
Yeah, I can just, yeah, I think I can explain that. I think what we wanted to do was we wanted to present, originally, I was kind of talking about presenting a 3.9 and not using fund balance to get it to, you know, get the budget. If I used, if I brought it in at 3.9, we'd need to use another 240,000 of fund balance. And I think that's on the table right now for the board to deliberate. If you feel strongly that you want it down to 3.9, we can just use another 240,000 of fund balance, and that gets it to 3.9.
And that's using a million twenty-five?
And I think, as we came down the homestretch, Bob, we were just trying to figure out, what do we present to the board? Do we present 3.9, or do we present 4.3? And so, that, in the Friday letter, when we were writing it, we were kind of thinking 3.9, or I was thinking 3.9, and after we chatted with you, Pat, you know, we kind of decided we present 4.3.
But then it would, it would put us in a more difficult position going into next year's budget cycle, correct?
That would be using a million twenty-five? Right now, we're using 825?
We're using 850.
850, so that would be...
And so, it puts you just below a million dollars to use, to bring it to 3.9. And I'm not sure it puts you in a difficult budget situation. What it does is, we're going to end the year at 3.8 million in fund balance. And so, you know, we're, this would mean, instead of ending at 3.8, we're going to end at 3.4 or 3.5, you know, it's a moving target as we come down the homestretch. We do have our expense freeze in place. And so, you know, it's tight, but it's not unmanageable.
Hold on, Bob wasn't done. I know you weren't done, Bob.
No, it's another, it's another question, so go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, and so, our thinking was, present to the board the 4.2 with the intent that there would be conversation between 4.2, 3.9, which if we went to the 3.9, we'd have to use additional fund balance dollars. But our recommendation, once again, was coming to the table and having that dialogue, that indeed, if it seems as though majority of the board members wanted to sway to the 3.9, that we would be able to address that, and we would be able to move in that direction.
And there were some board members that are somewhat in favor of using fund balance, and others that are against it totally. So, that's one of the reasons we came back at the 4.2.
I speak to the fund balance.
Well, if I could just say one other thing about the fund balance, though, this year, our operating budget, we used 1.6 million dollars worth of fund balance. So, to the extent that next year, we use 1, I mean, you know, typically, when districts, you're kind of weaning yourself from using fund balance.
Right, right.
You know, we tried to step down from 1.6 all the way to 6, and, you know, so we're...
But traditionally, we have stayed around $600,000 in terms of fund balance.
Prior to last year.
You know, and my concern, I'm like the Lorax of the fund balance. My concern is that our fund balance doesn't approach the 4 percent that we're allowed to have, that in this economic environment, and budgeting as tightly as we're budgeting this year, that fund balance is not going to be replenished. And some of us here have lived through roof collapses that we didn't expect, and other events that we didn't expect. I don't want to leave this district vulnerable, you know, I mean, I think right now, what you're proposing shows some balance. To dip further into this, to save $7 on a $100,000 house, the difference between $89 and $82, to me, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Because if you're going to vote down 89, you're also going to vote down 87. And it places us in a more vulnerable position. So, I have a big mouth, but I would counsel that we not, that we not take more than the proposal for the 4.2.
Go ahead, Bob.
All right, I'm going to take a different perspective. I'm concerned, last year, our school budget was defeated by the taxpayers. Even though it was a close vote, it was defeated. Other than using the website, which is wonderful, but there are many people in our community that do not go to papers, do not go to district dispatches, do not go, what is our plan of attack by the administration to make sure... attack by the administration to make sure that this school budget is passed this year?
Well, we have a list of venues that we will be hitting in terms of getting the word out about the budget. We're going to tweak this presentation, and we're going to basically go on a roadshow to present the information to the groups that haven't engaged in any of the process, as well as some of the groups who have. Having said that, even in informing the community, I think, the struggle is between those who have children in the community and those who don't, right? And for those who don't, where do they fall, and what are they willing to pay? Whether it be 82, or 80, you know, 82, 89, 87, 89, it really is going to come down to what are they willing to pay, and if indeed, they're willing to pay anything above what they currently pay now. But we've already started conversations, we've got our list of different venues that we will be hitting, and once tonight is over, we will be pulling the trigger on, you know, hitting all of those places. As well as, we've talked about other things in terms of, like, for those of you who had the opportunity to look at the dispatch, you know, the different format that we've used, the information that we're putting out on the website, they're more article form than letters, I guess, in the past. And so, we're really trying to, once again, continue to educate the community about what the work is that we've been doing as we've tried to develop the budget and make recommendations to the board.
Bob, I've heard more chatter about this budget than I have for quite some time. I mean, I've had conversations with people in the most unusual places. Honestly, it's been interesting. I don't think there's gone a day gone by that I haven't had at least four or five conversations regarding this budget. From everything, from the students, there's a lot of chatter in the classrooms regarding the budget, and the grocery store, the park, you name it, we've had the conversation. So, I think people are talking about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Pat.
I have one question about what was allowable for us to have a fund balance and how much below that we are currently.
Well, you're allowed to have 4%.
Right, but what's that number?
And we're headed toward about 2.5%.
What's that number? What's 4%? What's the number?
Oh, you know, I don't have my calculator with me, but it's 4%.
2.2.
If we get this budget level passed, it'll be 4% of 138.8.
Okay.
You know, we're, you know, so it would be mid-5 million, and we're at 3.8 million, give or take.
And that's prior to using additional funds?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, we'll, if we use the additional funds, it'll put us at about 3.5 million.
Don?
Go ahead.
And that, that 3.8 has all those other fund balances, like the liability and the...
Well, no, actually, so there's two, I'm glad you asked. No, it's a good question. It's a really good question, because this is confusing. So, the 3.8 million truly is, Bob or somebody, Sandra used the example of the roof caving in, you know, the, hopefully, anything that happens to us will be insured, but stuff happens that isn't. And, you know, our fund balance, to use the analogy I used early on, it's like a family with a family income of $80,000, having $2,200 in the bank. Hey, it's good, but all you need is the furnace to go, and the $2,200 is gone. So, picture that on our scale of an operation where we have 10 campuses. That's where we're at. But back to your question about the reserves. So, we do have a workman's comp reserve, we have, we have some other reserves that cover specific liabilities, but in the opinion of our accountants, and in my professional opinion, there's no extra money in those reserves, there's no cushion. Those are about as tight as they could be.
Do those reserves, that's part of the 4% though, correct?
No.
Okay.
No, it's above and beyond.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
And I guess, to reiterate all of what you're saying and your response is a reason top of the others that we've reiterated, why we came to the table with the 4.2%. Because I have a huge concern with continuing to dip into the fund balance. I mean, you know, by the grace of God, we didn't have a harsh winter, you know, there were so many things that played in our favor, but there's, you know, no magic ball or wand on what's going to happen next year, and if something, you know, anything could go wrong, where we have to tap into that and wipe that out. wipe that out.
Be a problem. But that's where you come in and you're making the big money. You figure out how that's going to happen. Now, if you've got sixteen teachers, kindergarten teachers, they've got twenty, according to Sandy, they have twenty-two kids in the morning and twenty-two kids in the afternoon. Therefore, there is forty-four kids. So, the way I see it is they're going to have at the most twenty-eight by all-day full kindergarten, which seems to me it's a better deal for the teachers. Plus, we're hiring back teachers that we're letting go, people who have already been excised because I guess some of the people that we're going to be not using next year don't have this certification, so therefore, we have to pull somebody else off the list. It seems to me, I wrote this down, but doesn't, don't mean that it's gospel. We're going to save transportation costs because all the kids are going to come to school together and all the kids are going to go home together. We don't have this afternoon stuff where mom's not home, dad's not home. The unemployment of teachers, we're going to save that. The residents, imagine that, the residents are going to save childcare costs, which should be a big plus if it's advertised correctly. There should be people coming out of the woodwork to vote for this budget. It puts nothing else in this budget. The budget's not higher. It's not costing you more. It's still costing you eighty-nine dollars. You okay, Pat?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
You're choking me up.
I'm making a joke. But I, I gotta tell you something. For me, we have been trying to do this in this district for, when I went to school here, we never had kindergarten. I started in first grade, five, fifth, five years old. Now, we have kindergarten. But we always said that when there was room, we were going to put it. Well, we thought we'd have to build this new elaborate hundred, hundred thousand, hundred... What was it, hundred what?
Hundred million.
Hundred million dollar referendum in order for all this to occur. Well, guess what? We can now fit them in. We don't have to pay a hundred million dollars. I'm looking for the day, if I'm still alive, still on this board, that the ninth graders can move up to CNS. They keep questioning certain people and it doesn't seem to be enough room. But I would be on that track too to move them up there. But I'm telling you, there's room in school. You're going to, it's, it's just a win-win situation for parents, voters, people who are paying the taxes in this district. This doesn't change this fact at all, nothing. We're going to get three point nine million dollars. Do you think that somebody up there is going to figure out, oh, what are we doing this for? We ought to cut this. And we're not, we're going to be out three point nine million dollars. I want three nine, point nine million dollars. I need my board members to support this. I guess I'm done.
Could you, could you go through the numbers again for all-day kindergarten?
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of short-term pain, short-term gain, long-term pain because we do get the funding in year one, but then we don't receive any fundings in year two or year three. So, it actually is a drain on our resources, you know, immediately of about one point eight million a year for those two years. In the third year, we do get funding, but then that would cut the pain to about eight hundred thousand dollars.
So, it's really going to cost eight hundred thousand dollars a year?
So, you may, to case point, you'd do well this year, but then the next two years, you'd have this boat anchor of a million eight a year. And then, the third year, the boat anchor would only be eight hundred thousand dollars.
So, it's three point nine million. And how much would it cost the first year to run the program?
Uh, I can...
Approximately.
Um, you know, I think what you'd, I think what you'd end up with is you'd end up with another one point seven million of additional costs.
So, that's one point seven million, so that's...
You just pick up two point two million.
That's two point two million. Then, if you take off for the second year, the one point eight million.
Yeah, by year three, you're losing money.
By year three, you're losing money. And then, once you start getting aid, it's going to cost an extra... Now, just explain to me, once, if we, if we were to do this, what happens in that third year or that fourth year?
Well, you just have to be able to fund the eight hundred thousand somewhere.
So, you're going to be cutting somewhere else.
And we would be putting, we would be putting resources that we're now spreading across the grade levels into one grade level. And that, I mean, I, I've been an advocate of all-day kindergarten for eight million years. And, you know, there were various reasons over the years I've been on every committee to consider it. Various reasons why we couldn't do it, didn't do it. The funding and the way the funding is structured was one of the reasons. And now, it's an even more compelling reason because our resources are limited and what we put into that kindergarten basket, even though we get the three point nine million the first year, you don't get aid for the, for the next two years. And it's still going to cost you eight hundred thousand dollars that you have to fund. So, saying that you're going to spread it out just doesn't work math, doesn't work out. And you would have to raise the budget now.
No, you don't.
Yes, you do, to account for that aid that's coming in. Sure, you do. You have to, you have to increase it for the expenditure.
Well, you probably, yeah...
It's a balance.
Yeah, you, but at the end of the day, you probably could make this year's budget work. It just, it gets ugly almost immediately.
Right.
You know, we'd be deciding now what we're going to cut next year to fund.
Absolutely. And I, I'm not willing to do that.
I need that.
Kay, you're a good friend of mine. And you, I remember back in nineteen eighty-three, believe it or not, when you were elected, this school board was not pro-teacher in the school district. You were the first one to come on the board and, and change this board. You are my friend. Since I've been on the school board for three years, you know kindergarten has been my, what I wanted. But I, I do not believe this year's the year we can do it. We have made some reductions in the budget. They've hurt all of us. Our program is not going to be the same. It hasn't been the same each year. It's, it's dwindled a little by little by little. Our program is not going to be the same next year as it is this year. And it probably won't be the year after. But I don't want to hire some people that we got to turn around the year after or the year after and say, we have to go. Sixteen teachers plus more, it would probably be more. We can't do that to people. And if you've looked on your website, there are many schools, including a school close to us, that's looked at going from full-time kindergarten to halftime. Every day, I've been online to see the excerpts. There are many school districts looking to go from full-time to halftime. And I really want you to vote yes on this budget, Kay? Kay?
All-day kindergarten.
I really want her, I really want you to vote yes on this budget. I think we have to go out and show the community. We each, there are parts of this budget that maybe we don't like, but we really got to show the community that we're unified and we want the school budget passed. That's how I feel.
Guess there's no sense calling the question, Mr. whether or not they're going to support me because they're not.
I would say not.
So, I'm a person among one, as always.
I would say not, Kay. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have, we have the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget asked presented by Mr. Keegan and Dr. Dice at a four point two, three. That was the number, Don? Percent increase?
Excellent.
Again, I, I, I have to say that, you know, it, it's pretty sad that, that that's the best we, that that's the best we could do, but I, I think it, it does almost everything that we wanted to do with as, as little effect. I know, Bob, that, that what you say relative to the program not being the same, it could have been much worse, I think. So, I would entertain a motion to accept that budget. Tony, and second, Mr. Crabtree? Go ahead.
I just want to read from the number. It would be the one hundred and thirty-eight million, seven seventy-one, two thirty-one number. Pat Carbone?
Yes.
Toni Brockley?
Yes.
Catherine Sepharata-Breeden?
No.
Robert Crabtree?
Yes.
Sandra Di Bianco?
Yes.
Scott McClintock?
Yes.
Mike Marizio?
Yes.
Jacqueline Owens?
Yes.
Patrick Savoda?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Okay, discussion action item A is to recommend, recommendation to approve the revised two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve calendar to reflect the day off for May twenty-fifth. Were there any questions on that at all? Any discussion? Tony, did you make a motion to approve that resolution?
I certainly did.
Second, Michael? All in favor? That's unanimous. Discussion action item B is to authorize a five-year service contract with Anadaga Courtland Madison BOSI's for communication drives.
Well, this is, this, this motion is so we can finish purchasing the, the phone system equipment, the migration we started a couple of years ago. And that'll be under a BOSI's lease and it's the most cost-effective way to purchase the equipment.
Questions? Discussion? Motion? Catherine Sepharata-Breeden, second. Scott McClintock, all in favor? That's unanimous also. Item C is a resolution authorizing a five-year service contract with Anadaga Courtland Madison BOSI's smart boards and other equipment, Don?
As Dr. Dice mentioned in the presentation, there's a real push to implement technology in order to increase employee productivity. And we've had an initiative in the district to get smart boards into the schools, and this is just a continuation of that initiative. And we'll be purchasing the equipment through BOSI's, which again, is the most cost-effective way to do it.
Any questions or comments? Catherine made the motion, second. Jackie, all in favor? And that's unanimous. This time, I would make a motion that we adjourn. Second, Tony, all in favor? That's unanimous and we're adjourned.